Thank you, everyone. And now, welcome to our Board of Education meeting. Please stand and join me in the pledge. The mission of the White Plains City School District is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Good evening. At this time, I'd like to ask you to join me in a moment of silence as we remember Ms. Karen Gray, Senior Clerk Typist and Office Assistant at Highlands and Rochambeau for Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have brief announcements from the Board. I can tell you that Rose and I attended the Salvation Army Breakfast that honored Ellen Doherty. It was our great pleasure to attend and see her be recognized for all of the hard work that she oversees here with our students and their volunteer activities. So, we just wanted to announce that and again congratulate you for your magnificent leadership.
So, right after that, I was happy to run over to the high school for a presentation that I was very surprised at. It was very interesting and I actually might have found something that I might be actually interested in working with further. The Department of Health presented a program on, a program called CODA, and that stands for, if I can find it, Co-Occurring Disorders Awareness. This program was started by a woman in, I believe, Artsley, who lost her son to suicide. Her son, Harris, so she called this the Harris Project. And what she's doing is bringing awareness to co-occurring issues. So, it's not only mental illness, but self-medication through drug use, alcohol use, and other substance abuse. We recognized several, not only this mother who began the program, but we recognized several of our youth who are very involved in the program. Two young students from Scarsdale, one was from Scarsdale and I don't remember where the other one was from, but, I'm sorry?
Rybrook.
Rybrook. So, they did a presentation and they are working to bring awareness to students about the dangers of jeweling and e-cigarettes. We then heard from one of our juniors, Anastasia Meininger, who told us about CODA Week here at White Plains High School and the different events that were taking place, just to bring awareness to our kids and to adults as well. We simply believe that people are addicted or they have a substance abuse problem, but what we need to realize is how often these are linked to other illnesses and mental illnesses most often. And unfortunately, I believe way too many of us have been touched by these issues and I think that many of our students might be interested in taking part in some of the programs. So, I do have some extra information if any of the kids here tonight are interested or if you know, if the parents know of any of their students who might also be interested. Finally, that night, so Thursday was a very busy day, I ran over to the Brazen Fox where we had our first ever PTA reunion. Lots of PTA volunteers came together, people I have not seen in many, many, many years, but who have put a lot of time and work into our district and our community. And it was great to get back in touch with old friends and just to spend an evening reminiscing and realizing how many people are still involved even though their kids are no longer in the district.
I'll try to speak fast. So, I did attend a Ridgeway PTA meeting. Tasha Brown, the principal there, gave a presentation on parenting in the digital era and talked about digital safety and cyberbullying to, you know, a robust group of parents. It was very interactive and very well done. I also attended the Manhattanville Changing Suburbs Institute Educational Forum on Specialized Techniques to Engage Each Learner. And I attended workshops on presentations on happiness, how educators can support undocumented students and their families. One of the presenters for that workshop was our own Dr. Monique Riley from Church Street School. Keynote address by Dr. Ronald Ferguson on Achieving Excellence with Equity in Today's Schools and Communities. And we're hoping that Dr. Ferguson will come and be with us in White Plains in the fall because he's also the person who initiated the Boston Basics. And you'll be hearing more about White Plains Basics in months to come. And then, a really interesting panel on a simulated RTI meeting for emergent bilinguals, response to intervention. So, really interesting. Then, the next day, I went to another conference held here at the high school on social and emotional learning. It was part of the Lower Hudson Teacher Center Network and hosted by our own Staff Development Center, Karen Cabral and Laura Crowley. And again, media and social and emotional learning, our seed program, which is run by Wendy Dale and Catalina Restrepo, creating trauma-sensitive schools, presented by Cindy Lembo, who is a social worker at Highlands. So, it was really great that as part of this larger network, our own in-house people were presenting. I also saw a few really delightful performances, Thoroughly Modern Millie at Highlands, East View on Broadway at East View, and here at the high school, multilingual theater experience put on by Theater Unlimited, World Culture Day at Post Road. It was really fun. I got to visit some of the classrooms and see the Parade of Nations where the younger kids march around with their flags and the older kids are outside in the halls greeting them and waving their country flags. It was really cool. And I also was at the Westchester Public Health Awards.
Thank you. Do we have any more announcements? Thank you. So, without further ado, we'll now proceed into the recognition of our scholar athletes.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Yes, no? Can you hear me? Okay. So, I'd like to thank Dr. Rika and the Board for giving us the opportunity to recognize all of our student athletes who not only had a great season on the court or in the pool, but did outstanding academically. We have 157 athletes this winter that were recognized by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association as having over 90 average of being a scholar athlete. We also have five of our 10 teams, we have 10 varsity teams in the winter, and five of them are also recognized as team scholar athlete teams, which means that over 75% of their roster has over a 90 average. So, we're very proud of our student athletes. The first team that we have up is our boys varsity basketball team. I'm just going to ask all the student athletes just to line up when we call your team. Coach, not Spencer Mayfield is not here tonight, but Coach Spencer Smith is here tonight to recognize his varsity boys basketball team. Come on up, Coach. Varsity Boys Basketball Team, line up. Guys, just line up right here.
Hello, everybody. My first time here at the Board Meeting, so happy to be here. We had a really good season. We were 15 and 8. A lot of people didn't pick us to do as well as we did, but we ended up in the Final Four. And we are on pace to have everybody return next year. So, looking forward to, you guys, support and a good season next year. We have four young men to call up. The first is Joseph Carrier.
Spencer was a 2007 graduate of White Plains and played on the varsity boys basketball. So, we're happy to have him back at White Plains and part of the staff. Congratulations, Varsity Boys Basketball Team. So, you guys can, you guys can sit down now. Speaking of the Final Four. Our next team up, we don't have too many members here because they all play varsity girls lacrosse and they're over in Rockland County tonight, but our varsity girls basketball team, who had an outstanding year. We have one of our students here tonight who had over a 90 average. The varsity girls basketball team was a team, won the team award. So, over 75% of their team had over a 90 average. I'm going to recognize all the girls and I'll call up the one young lady who's here. So, Katherine Imodio, Kennedy Lee. Alexa Donahoe, Daisy Klink, Adriana Moreno, and Julia Reggio, most spring sport athletes. So, congratulations, Varsity Basketball Team. Our next team up, we're so proud of them this year, they went to Nationals and they did very well, is our varsity cheerleading coach, Coach Palesco.
I'd like to thank the school board, Dr. Rika, Ms. Doherty, Mr. Cameron, and all the parents and family who play an integral part in making sure our athletes have the best experiences possible. Cheer was fortunate this year to have the opportunity to attend Nationals in Orlando. And if you don't know, it's like the Super Bowl for cheerleaders, thanks to the combined efforts of many of the people in this room. Cheer is proud to announce six scholar athletes. Neelani Munjan. Tiana Thompson.
Our next team, Coach cannot be here tonight. His daughter, who is also our assistant varsity lacrosse coach, is getting her white coat. She's a medical student. So, they have that ceremony tonight, so we figured that was excusable. So, we'll have the team captain come down, who is also a scholar athlete, is our varsity ice hockey team. Coach Rubenstein cannot be here, but Justin Schultz, he's here. He's going to, he's the captain of the team. He's going to call his teammates down. And we would have to bring his little brother down here, too, to help because he brought the team out every home game on skates and he will be skating up here sooner or later one time.
Michael Perry.
Thank you. Very cute.
Congratulations, Ice Hockey Team. They're also league champs this year. I left that out about the varsity boys basketball. They won their league, too. Our next team up, boys and girls indoor track, this one always takes a little longer. Boys indoor track was a team award winner, girls indoor track was a team award winner, and combined, they have 89 student athletes that were scholar athletes. Coach Melissa Hildago is here to announce the team. So, you, boys, girls, will come down together. Which team do you want to do first? Boys, let's line up. We'll line up and Coach will call you down. And both of these two teams won their leagues this year, too. So, congratulations.
Marcus Chung. Renzo Chunga. Ryan DeSavino. Alex Fenstermacher. Jacob Furrie. Louis Grassi. Matthew Lau. Adam Malo. Paolo Medellius. Logan Rising Owen. Matthew Solanich. Andrew Schick. Eric Antonekia. Carl Fisher. Carlos Harper. Ramses Aguilar. Nicholas DiFilippas. Ralph Chin. Carlos Bonilla. Dominic Wools. Adrian Lepe. Sebastian Quinn. Michael Hunter. Daniel Cale. Jackson McCormick. Val Borkin. Aiden Williams. Justin Farrell. Aiden Morgan. Christian Young and Justin Byers. Angelica Ringo. Hannah Baumann. Emma Bernaby. Fiona Bradley. Simone Brady. Kira Broderick. Lisa Berg. Lauren Cassidy. Michaela Dawson. Cordelia Gellen. Karen Hazy. Mia Lu. Paula Mangana. Julia Mancini. Winifred Mann. Jade Palmer Johnson. Beyonce Kirimbongo. Sarah Segner. Isabella Sandoval. Raquel Serig. Caroline Schick. Zeta Suarez. Zoma Aguilar. Zoe Westlund. Gillian Vignon. Jessica Spencer. Madison Sanchez. Evelyn Pardo. Farrah Miller. Taylor Johnson. Sherlin Garcia. Isabella Lugo. And then, our last four, Michelle Castrillo, Megan Conney, Chelsea Kolos, and Toni Bolton.
All right, congratulations, Boys and Girls Track Team. Our next team is our Boys Swimming Team. Coach Gil Martin was not able to be here. We have Coach Josh Eller. He's going to call down the team. The Boys Swim Team had 75% of their team, so 15 of their student athletes were going to be recognized tonight as scholar athletes.
As Matt said, I'm Josh Eller. I am the assistant coach for the Boys Swim Team. Of course, Coach Gil Martin could not be here, nor could Coach Davis, but in their pride, they want to mention that we had 15 boys making the senior awards night and Henry Stern actually had the highest average of 98 points percent. It's been a great season and an honor to work with this team. We all look forward to working with the returning swimmers and we wish our seniors good luck in college next year. We want to thank you parents for our support as well. So, now, here are the swimmers. Lenny Balarezza. Ryan McDonough. Edward Molina. Louis Melendez Sanchez. Henry Stern. Last but not least, Pedro Vila. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Coach Eller. Congratulations, Varsity Boys Swim. The next team up is in its second year as a program. We have two teams. We have a varsity boys bowling team, who was a New York State Public High School Scholar Athlete Team winner, and our girls bowling team, who had a couple of individual awards. Coach Setti, come on down.
So, in addition to having a great academic season, the bowling team, the boys team, came in second place in our league. And in addition to our scholar athletes, I also have some additional awards I wanted to let you all know about. So, first, we have Curtis Sante. Vincent Krupi, he was an All-League Honorable Mention this year. William Proud, All-League and All-Section. Austin Antico. Sam Brown. Spencer Engler. Daniel Pinto. Jackson Reynolds, All-League Honorable Mention. Spencer, Sean Ivors, excuse me, All-League and State Champion. And my scholar athlete girls, Kristen Andrade. And Annabelle Chow. And Annabelle Chow.
Congratulations, varsity boys and girls bowling. Last but certainly not least, is our varsity boys wrestling team. Coach Dietrich. He had more kids this year go to sectionals than he did on the team when he took the program over, um, four years ago.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Dietrich, and I am the varsity wrestling coach here at White Plains High School. On behalf of the entire White Plains Wrestling Program, I want to thank everyone for all of your continued support and help this past season. I'm now proud to announce the names of this year's Scholar-Athlete wrestlers. Tyler Kobel. Gabriel Garbaldi. All-Section wrestler, second place in the section, Sebastian Garbaldi. Alan Hernandez. Julian Tab. And last but not least, Ruben Villa. I just want to say it has been both an honor and a privilege to coach these well-deserving students. Congratulations to all the scholar athletes here tonight. Thank you.
So parents, certainly understand, this couldn't be done without you. I, uh, spent my weekend at a lacrosse tournament and got sunburned, so I know how many years it is driving your kids to the sports and supporting them and doing everything it takes. So parents, congratulations, and congratulations to the one hundred fifty-seven student athletes, and thank you again for giving us the opportunity to brag about them tonight.
Next, we're going to move into, um, next, we're going to move into our public participation. The public is invited to address the board and the superintendent on any matter relating to White Plains Public Schools. Please limit your statements to three minutes. Please also respect the privacy and dignity of all individuals, whether students, faculty, administrators, or others. The administration will be happy to address privately any school-related matters of a more personal nature. Do we have any public participation tonight?
Yes.
Thank you. Please come up and state your name.
Good evening to the White Plains Board of Education and my fellow White Plains community. My name is Susan Bailey, and I am a community stakeholder who wears more than one hat. I was recruited thirty-two years ago to teach in the White Plains School District. This qualified twenty-one-year-old, yes, twenty-one-years-old. This qualified twenty-one-year-old had no professional teaching experience. As a result of intimate conversational interviews with various principals, my name was recommended for a tenure-track teaching position. Within the past ten years, I have noticed the number of African-American teachers, faculty members diminish. It is even more noticeable now than ever. The need to hire African-American faculty is a serious matter. For the past four years, I have had in-depth conversations with the various superintendents and assistant, uh, superintendents of Human Resource. They have been receptive, but the number of African-American faculty continues to drop. As an African-American faculty member, I can say, all children, regardless of their race, primary spoken language, and home culture, benefit from experiencing an African-American teacher within the White Plains School District. There are, by the way, White Plains students who graduate without having experienced one African-American teacher or counselor. In light of our national racial climate and all the isms, even within the county of Westchester, all students and staff should be given the opportunity to intimately interact with an African-American faculty member. This will help change the negative narrative this country has placed upon African-Americans, all the while receiving excellent guided instruction. Parents from every race and socioeconomic status have consistently requested their child be in this African-American teacher's class. So I leave you with this quote from Werner Myers. Diversity is being asked to the party. Inclusion is being asked to dance. So let's include more African-American teachers in the White Plains City School District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Will there be any other, uh, public, uh, participation? Thank you very much. We do appreciate hearing you. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, congratulations again to our scholar athletes. It's fantastic, just wonderful. And I am happy to welcome Pilar and Jackson, our representatives, up to the podium.
Scholar athletes.
Scholar athletes.
Scholar athletes.
Hi, everyone. Is this, is this good enough? Yeah, this is okay. Um, Happy Monday. Um, we have some cool stuff, as always, because there's always cool stuff going on in White Plains. Um, so Portfolio Week at the high school has just passed, which is really, really cool. It was a show, um, by the juniors and seniors at White Plains High School, an art show. Um, it was from Tuesday to Friday, and the students were able to show off all their artwork in one of our main hallways in the building downstairs. It was really, really cool. We had a reception on Wednesday at lunch where all the parents could come and, um, observe their child's artwork or their friend's artwork, all that good stuff, with snacks and punch included. As Mitch Lovich was talking about, we have been pretty active in the Harris Project, which, as she explained, is the Co-Occurring Disorders Awareness, um, project. And so the high school hosted the Westchester Public Health Service Awards, which is really cool. We had some students attend, myself included. It was really, really cool. Um, Senator Mayer was there, County Executive George Latimer was there. It was really cool to see, um, all these people being honored for some really wonderful work, um, for helping the health of our community here in Westchester. Um, and us as students, we've been getting more involved with this, um, CODA organization, as it's called, again, Co-Occurring Disorders Awareness. Um, and as Dr. Rika knows, we're starting a new hashtag. We're trying. Um, and the hashtag is #YouAreASTarBecause. Um, we're trying to make it into a social media movement so we can raise awareness about this issue, co-occurring disorders, which again is, um, the mix of both mental health disorders and substance abuse, whether it's alcoholism or drug abuse. Um, it's really prevalent, and usually the issue that we have with that is that one is treated while the other isn't. So mental health is treated, but the substance abuse isn't. Um, and they're treated as isolated events instead of really related events as they are. Um, so we're working hard to raise awareness about that, and we're doing a bunch of cool stuff related to that. We went to the Westchester County Center for this big CODA Day event, which is really, really cool. Um, I was able to facilitate one of the events and talk about, um, just the power of youth leadership, especially in these realms of mental health. It's really important to get your voice out there. Um, so yeah, stay updated with that. It's really cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, okay. So just a few more things. A couple of weeks ago, we had the seed overnight for White Plains High School. It was a trip. We went up to Ramapo. It was just this really cute place upstate. But, um, so it was a very, very powerful, powerful trip. We had a bunch of students representing a large variety, variety of clubs. Um, so we worked through discussions and activities centered around racism and how to eliminate it in our community, in our school, and pretty much our entire global society. And then additionally, today's Spirit Week started. It is our final one for the school year, just to show some school spirit. So today, a lot of people wore pajamas. It's very cute. Um, and then finally, the NHS Ceremony, the National Honor Society Ceremony, is approaching. It's coming on Thursday, just to recognize all the students and their hard work, hard work academically.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Uh, just a couple of quick things this evening. We had mentioned, and again, congratulations to Principal Doherty, related to Salvation Army Community Awards, and it was really all fantastic to host the Westchester County Department of Health and Community Service Awards here as well. Very special, and thanks, uh, Ms. Algarten for helping to facilitate that with Mr. Commissioner Orr. Um, I also had the opportunity to present with Sergio Alfonso at the Electric Vehicle Symposium at ConEd and talk about White Plains being the first to, uh, to, um, put electric buses, electrified buses on the road. And it was really quite, quite an experience, and there was a lot of interest, and there is a lot of interest being generated all throughout the country, really. Um, and it's all related to that Volkswagen money that's been made available. So we're, we're going to be looking more at that as well. Today, um, had a, had a real great chance to stop by Highlands, where the, uh, the ninth-grade avid students were presenting their career fair to the students at Highlands. Um, also had, um, we also hosted a, uh, a press conference with, with the Youth Bureau and Congresswoman Lowey related to the potential funding reductions that would impact our after-school STEM, uh, programs. And that was on last Friday. Post-Roe held their Spring Fest on Saturday. Um, and, uh, I'm told that somebody won superintendent for a day, so I'll be looking forward to hosting, I believe, a first grader, um, which will be, will be a lot of fun, and that'll be, that'll be a great day. Uh, we have the Citywide Orchestra this week on Wednesday here at White Plains High School. Don't miss it. Come out and enjoy what's going to be a fantastic night. And, uh, as was just mentioned, the National Honor Society induction on Thursday. Um, I also just want to make a, a quick statement related to assessments. You know, we had, we had our student, high-stakes student assessments took place last week, part of them. Uh, and there was also the computer-based testing that took place as well, which experienced some, some difficulty on, on the first day. Um, I just want to thank our, our faculty and staff members and, and our administrators, and of course, our students, who worked through that difficulty. Seems the state just can't get it right. And I know there was a big conversation up in Albany today, um, related to the need to stop trying things out on our kids. Uh, we need to make sure that before we bring testing, uh, high-stakes assessments to our kids, to our classrooms, that it works. It's not right to have folks in the communities all throughout the state of New York invest resources and time getting ready for something that doesn't work. So, um, we're, we're going to keep, uh, we're going to keep a close eye on that. We've already been in contact with our elected officials, and, um, they're delivering the message to State Ed as well. And I know the Regents had a meeting today, and there was a discussion related to an email that came out from Commissioner Aliela, um, related to the, the refusal rate in, in the state, and how school districts should, which we do in White Plains, honor parent and guardian requests to sit out from, from assessments. And we've, we've always done that. What's interesting, though, is that that message came out from State Ed, and State Ed is holding Boards of Education and school districts accountable for ninety-five percent participation rates, according to ASCA. So we were confused on exactly what State Ed or where State Ed is related to the issue, and, and we, we, uh, we sent a questionnaire out as well, or a question, um, to, to find out exactly how, how we can be of two minds of this issue. Either it's the ninety-five percent, or, um, it's we're squarely behind parents and guardians, which we are. Um, but we'll keep you posted on that. That, that's been, uh, an interesting, um, sort of turn of events lately. The, uh, the last thing that, that I'll, that I'll mention, the most important thing, of course, is that tonight is our, is our proposed budget, hopefully, approval. Um, and there, there's just so many thanks to go around for all the hard work that, that takes place in, in the many iterations of the budget, from the, the concept related to goal-setting, then to long-range planning, then to initial, initial budget presentations, and, and, and again, reiterations, um, to ultimately arriving today, where we have the nineteen-twenty proposed budget for the Board's formal consideration and, and adoption. Um, I want to thank again everybody who participated in this process, certainly Dr. Vikaro Tysh and your team, um, as well as the rest of our core team, uh, and faculty and staff members, who all contributed to our PTA, to our parents and guardians, who gave, um, great insights into what we'd like to be looking, not just this year, but for the long term, right? Because, you know, and I was just talking to, to, to the trustees about this. Budgetary planning is not a year-to-year activity, right? It doesn't ever stop, and we, we continue to, to look into the future and to recognize that today's decisions are going to make an impact on tomorrow. So again, thanks to everybody who participated in this process. We do have, um, in addition to the budget question, two additional questions, which will be the capital reserve projects, six-point-four million dollars, which is outlined in, in, in our budget presentation. And we have copies of that as well for folks who may be interested in taking a look. Mrs. Schoenfeld has those copies. Um, and, and also a, a third question that's asking for the community's support in creating and establishing another capital reserve. Ten years, twenty-five million dollars, which will again allow the district to save money, to put money aside in undesignated fund bonds at the end of the, uh, oh, sorry. Yes, at the end of the year, um, to then use on capital projects. And again, this, this, this is smart planning. Thinking about the six-point-four million, we, we believe that we're saving at least one-point-three million dollars just in, in, uh, in fees alone, uh, and interest alone, if, if we had gone out to bond.
And that's money we've already saved.
That's right.
Put aside to be used.
And no additional taxes. Right.
Did you say no additional taxes? Say it again.
No additional taxes. No impact on, on the taxpayer. Now, there were some questions that came up related to, um, the, the, the final budget and state aid allocations. Now, I'm very pleased to share, very happy to share, and grateful, in fact, to share, um, that we went from a point-four-eight percent projected state aid, um, increase, right, about sixty-five thousand dollars, to an eleven-point-one percent increase, which is just about one-point-five-three million dollars. Now, that's great, and we're really, we're really, we're really thankful, and, and we're really pleased that our elected officials fought so hard for us. Um, this is, this is a, a great step forward. But what's really important to remember is we're still only fifty-seven percent funded, right? So even though we went from point-four-eight percent, which really was laughable, okay, of your money, right? Remember, Albany doesn't print money, so point-four-eight percent, um, to eleven-point-one percent is great. It's a great step in the right direction, and, and believe me, I went and spoke to all of our elected officials and thanked them very much. We're grateful. Um, and they recognized that there's still more work to do. Um, as you may have read just in the Journal News just the other day, even with increases related to state aid, um, they're still concerned about the future when you're thinking about the, the permanency of the tax cap and the recognition that there is no stability in terms of being able to plan for what next year's tax cap is going to be. So we're going to be really smart, um, as we have been in the past. And we're going to make sure that the, the way in which we utilize this money is associated with our long-range plan, that it doesn't, uh, get caught up in co-occurring costs, right? So we don't want to create legacy costs associated with these dollars. We want to make sure that they're going to be available next year to continue to support our kids and to support our, our programs. So we're thinking about all different types of things, all different types of ways to be able to, um, continue to support our, our, our program and make it even a more robust program. So everything from safety and security, right, to program evaluation, to professional development, to experiences for our children in schools. Um, really, there are a number of things that we're considering, and, and I've asked the Board to allow us to continue to, to consider this, because what we'd like to be able to do is provide, um, a, a strong plan and make sure that these dollars are utilized in the classroom appropriately. So we're really pleased with that. We, we were really happy to see it. Um, but we recognize that, you know, there's still more work to be done. So think about that. We're only fifty-seven percent funded. Millions. Yeah, eleven and a half million dollars to load. Yeah, yeah. So, you know, that's, that's important to remember, um, going forward. And we'll continue to work with our elected officials, and we'll, we'll continue to lobby Albany to return more White Plains money to White Plains, um, because, you know, our kids deserve it. So that's where we are right now in, in terms of the budget and some, those, those changes. And again, the, the election is on May twenty-first, Tuesday, May twenty-first. You'll hear me say that eight thousand more times. Um, we are going to be going everywhere and talking to everybody and anybody who would like to talk to us about the budget, beginning, uh, tomorrow night, where we'll be at George Washington and Church Street. Um, we, we will continue, uh, moving and working along with our PTAs and our community liaisons. But we'll also have all this information online. Everything is available. Every, everything from, you know, the, the, um, the long-range plan to the, the different iterations of the budget is all available for everybody. And of course, we're always available. Um, we'll be meeting, uh, with, uh, Mr. Bailey and we'll be on, uh, People to Be Heard, uh, I think, the 10th of May, right, Mr. Bailey? Yes, so we'll be looking forward to that as well. And, and again, um, just making ourselves available. The most important thing that we can do as a community is participate in the process. Remember last year, heavy rainstorm. Everyone got caught in Grand Central. It was, it was, it was, it was tough, right? Um, we need to make sure that, uh, we need to make sure that we're reminding everybody to participate in the process. It's that important. I'm happy to, to answer any questions that the Board might have, but again, thank you very much. Pollings open from 12 to 9. Oh, Ed, uh, we have, uh, two incumbents also. Um, two, two candidates, two incumbents running for, for the Board as well. Trustee Brady and Vice President Naris.
That's right. Very excited to be on the ballot again with Cheryl.
Ditto.
Any questions? No? We, we can?
Questions? No questions?
No.
Alright, so next, next? Next, okay. So thank you for that. Next, we're going to move to summary action items. We have summary action items for Sections 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. May I have a motion?
Second.
Do we have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next, we have individual actions, um, under, like, number 9. The approval of, may I have a motion for the approval of the proposed budget? Do we have any questions?
No, I, I think I'd comment if I...
Sure.
Which would be helpful. Thanks to, uh, Dr. Rika, Dr. Vikaro Teish, and, uh, thank everybody as far as developing the budget. Uh, the Finance Committee, the time spent there, and the other members of the Board as well. Dr. Rika really just talked, touched on a really important part and that has to do with, um, sustainability in our budget. And, you know, this is, this is a one-year budget, but as we look forward, uh, you know, we have to have a three, five, and 10-year outlook on, uh, on how we want to manage and what we want for our children in the, in the city. And with the permanent tax cap now, that's just a, it's an outlook that we have to be more cognizant of, I think, as we move forward. So, uh, and thank you for the time and effort. I think this is a, a good budget for the children of our district. Thank you.
Any other questions? No questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I'd also like to echo the Dr. Rika, Dr. Teish, Vikaro Teish, and everyone who participated in developing this budget. It was, uh, it's always a long, arduous process and I think it's a reasonable budget and sustainable, as Jim was talking about. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we're, we're going to Board Discussion. Next, we're going to Board Discussion. We have, um, this is the first reading of, um, our policies. Uh, the 400-series policies. If I'm not, no? Four thousand. Okay. 4,000-series poli-, uh, uh, policies. This is the first reading for comment. I, um, I think I can say that the Policy Committee, minus me, has already looked at those and I know comments were already received, so the first public reading and we can still have questions and updates. So, um, that's under Board Discussion. Next, um, we'll go to our Committee Reports. Uh, I can say that Special Ed meets tomorrow, 5:30. Huh? Wednesday, Wednesday, thank you.
You lost the day.
You know?
Totally Monday, but it's fallen two days already.
It feels like, it feels like, yeah.
HR Committee and Board met and we can't really talk about it here. And Finance Committee met and we had our internal auditors there and we talked about the plans for the coming year.
And Curriculum met as well and we talked some about Math Professional Development, Dual Language Update, and the meetings that have taken place among, um, you know, faculty and, and staff. Some are curriculum work that's going to occur. Social Studies, Curriculum Review, um, High School Technology Committee, and some about Avid, and we're going to hear more about Avid, I guess, in the May meeting.
And also, I just want to mention that, um, the Youth Bureau, I do sit on that Board as a liaison, um, the Youth Bureau and, and the schools. And although there's a lot of conflict and I can't always get there because we have something in the district on a Thursday, the last Thursday, um, I was able to get there where Dr. Rika did present on, um, school suspensions and had, and handled any questions related to that. Any other report-outs? Any other, any other report-out? Okay, so before I adjourn the meeting, John and John, John, John Shepherd and John Savage, thank you so much for all you do. Um, may I have a motion to adjourn to, um, for an exec session to discuss personnel matters?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you and thank you.
Thank you.